Don.
So, yeah, thanks for the conference and the others assigning authority for ATE.
ATE.
And you this year?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
You bet. I will be pleased.
Oh, and this one, these four accounts, those are ours. That's giving you signing authority for all four. I just looked at it and like, those are our accounts.
A lot more.
You need signing authority on all of them for us. Yeah.
Okay, it's seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Any additions to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll adjourn the motion. Dwayne? Okay, any discussion on Dwayne's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the questions in favor. Opposed, seeing none, it's carried out. Okay, moving on to the minutes of October twenty-seventh meeting. Any errors, mentions, questions? Judy?
Almost finished presenting.
Judy moved on. Any discussion on Judy's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the questions in favor. Opposed, seeing none, it's carried out. Okay, moving on to correspondence, there's a letter from Honorable Dan Williams. Congratulating. That's all right. And. We did meet with him.
He came here.
Yes, he came here.
He came to the county office and we met down there with him and seemed like a nice fellow, so.
Really?
Yeah, seemed really quite nice, so.
Cool.
Okay, any questions on that letter? Okay, hearing none, I'll move on to the next one, which is a letter from the Elks thanking us for their support during the hundredth anniversary celebration. Okay, any questions? Hearing none, I'll move on to Grant Hunter's thirty-two page.
Wow, that was long, my goodness, holy.
That's about average.
Oh, is it? Okay, really?
Yeah, but there's good information in there.
Well, like I said, you have to kind of read through it, it's, you know, it definitely comes from the side, which is fine, but at least he takes the time to do something, we don't get anything from the opposition at all, so. It's too bad that there isn't something that they see that they could add, but anyway.
It's worth noting that he presents this at the mayor's agrees as well, so we make sure that we put it forward, it's usually for good information on different initiatives that the government's working on.
Okay, ready, and moving on to ORSC, private sewage disposal system.
First one is the first.
Well, I'm sorry, I apologize, the new C A O, ORSC new C A O.
She's come along ways. More West Territories.
Okay, any questions on the appointment of Jacy's Thomas? Then, the hierarchical fall twenty-five private sewage disposal systems. We get these, how often do they do it?
They do quarterly, and a lot of times because they're from our planners and that, they email them out to us and then we present them to council, because a lot of times they have good information, even though they don't seem relevant some right away, when you read through, you'll realize that they do have a good impact in our community and and there might be a piece of information in there that might help you on the M B C or something like that, lots of times we've seen things from setbacks, pathways, this one's on private sewage systems, which you wouldn't think would impact us, but our bylaw straight out says that you can have a private system unless until a public system here are utilities are theirs.
So would that be the areas such as south of town?
Absolutely, yeah, and and part of our land use bylaws says that you can have that private sewage system until the private, the utility runs through there, so.
But not the industrial part?
No.
No. Okay. No, I just clarification, that's all.
Yeah, and there might be one other one on the north side too that has a one, two, but I'm not sure. Just gonna say.
Oh, yes.
Come over to one or two.
Which one is that?
Roffies.
The wrecking yard. I know, sitting there, it's because it's grandfathered, yeah.
So there might be one in there.
He has his own private system?
Could be.
Yeah, we were, yeah.
Okay.
Cool.
Okay, anything else on, or anything on ORSCs? Okay, if not, we'll move on to Seawas memo, update the members.
Tom usually gives pretty good updates on this as well, so.
Okay, the R C M P Q two full report.
Once a year, are the R C M P coming in to do a presentation, but they do quarterly reports and send them out, they're all very consistent, so you can bear one to the last one. And, yeah.
Do they ever discuss enforcement in the villages and towns to with regards to minor infractions, or is this mainly?
This report, and then when they do the presentation to council, that's when they can shift their their yearly plan for enforcement, so should something come up in the community when we change from peace officer to bylaw enforcement officer, but they met with council, the directive was there that, hey, you know, more enforcement in town on things where the travel side, those sort of things.
Okay.
They also do or have had town halls, or they, remember, there was one in Champion one time.
Yeah, it was one of communities.
During the communications meeting.
Yeah, communications.
And so they do participate in other events to try and do wider spring or spam of discussion. And, you know, some of this was a bit of a discussion about there are two other R C M P districts in County of Vulcan's footprint, so.
Are other municipalities like county paying into the R C M P as well?
Yeah.
And the villages are too?
Yeah.
Everybody now, it used to be a few, five thousand. You didn't, and all M Ds and counties were exempt.
Yeah.
And then they changed the rules and all the counties and M Ds and every, all of us get to pay in towards it.
Yeah, so in our situation, we went from not paying anything into the R C M P to a hundred and fifty-seven thousand in four years, so.
Is that why they're moving to provincial?
No.
No, this was just a cost recovery. And they made that move, and with that, cost recovery, there became a fairly large push for accountability and public engagement to make sure that they're meeting the needs of the community, so that's why we get quarterly reports the way we do, where you probably didn't see those in the past sitting in council, and again, they're making an effort to try to help once a year to sit in front of council give an update on where they're at on their, on their yearly objectives, and again, as Tom said, they're doing public town halls, and they're trying to move them around, so they'll have one in Arrowhead, you know, later the next year, then we'd have one in Champion, and they'll have one at, I believe, Vulcan's was last year at the lodge hall, and they did a little more of a Q beforehand. Yeah, a lot more, a lot more public interaction with the R C M P to try to, to get.
Boister their presence in the community. And also, I think, depends on too what their staffing's like, I mean, they're, they're very, like, you can see as an example, their staff is very well-staffed to the degree, so compared to what it used to be in the past, so. Okay, any other questions on the R C M P one? Okay, moving on to the letter of culmination from the archives.
This one's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, just appreciation.
Thank you very much, so.
Thank you for doing it, which is really nice from the Historical Society, because that was a Legion request, and council approved it, and it was quite interesting that the Legion was actually in here doing some things with the coffee when we received this, so we also shared with the Legion a request, kind of a thank you from the Historical Society, so they were pretty pleased with that as well.
Okay, since there's any no extra questions or comments, somebody wish to call? Any discussion on Cole's motion to file these? Hearing none, I'll call the questions in favor. Opposed, seeing none, it's carried out. Okay, moving on to the Shunak Arch.
This one's pretty straightforward, Lorraine Kirk has been appointed as the town representative on the Shunak Arch Library Board, and she has had a one-year term and has stated that she would, she would be up for, to be reappointed, so she's willing to sit for another term until the end of, until November twenty-twenty-six.
Cool.
I'll make the recommendation that council approve the reappointment of Lorraine Kirk as a Shunak Arch Library Board to the Shunak Arch Library Board as a town of Vulcan representative for a one-year term ending November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-six.
Okay, thank you. Any?
Question? Why only one year term?
It's all she wanted to do, we can appoint for up to three.
Okay.
But she also, one of the reasons why she's not on our library board is she cannot work at the library and be on the library board, but she can sit on the Shunak Arch, so while she's an employee and on Shunak Arch, she decided to do it year by year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? If not, call the questions in favor. Opposed, seeing none, it's carried out. Okay, moving on to the F C S S and Food Bank R and D fund request.
R D M? Rural Development Network Funding, and this was included in the budget last year, and it's contingent on whether they receive the grant funding for that position. It's the same as last year, the requests, requesting twenty-five thousand from all of the partners, our shares based on the funding model for F C S S funding, and should council move forward with it, we amended the notion a little bit from what it was last time to just make sure that it's contingent on approval and cost sharing, participation from the regional partners, and should grant not be available.
I'll make the recommendation that council approves Vulcan Region Family Community Services Support Services Board request, it was a thing, for the town of Vulcan to provide, I'm just gonna do this because it keeps popping.
How did you do?
Okay, thank you. Request for the town of Vulcan to provide additional funding of six thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars for the purpose of supporting a rural development network program run under the Vulcan Regional Food Bank Society, should grant funding not be available, and contingent on the approval and cost sharing participation from regional partners in Vulcan and region family and community support services agreement, for funding for this to be drawn from a non-recurring grants portion of the two thousand twenty-six operational budget.
That was a help.
Way to go.
Mr. Hill? Is that enough money? In council size?
Yes, so what, sorry, sorry, so they used to receive a hundred thousand dollars from the provincial government for this program, it was cut to sixty, so they, the program can run under that for eighty-five thousand, so they asked for twenty-five from all of the partners, so our share of that twenty-five thousand is six thousand three hundred and fifty-five.
Two years ago, we got twenty thousand. And then Dawn phoned them, and then a lot of people, because we talk about it at F C S S, and everybody said, oh, we're gonna apply for it, and then a lot of people didn't know what to do with it, so then it came back in, so then we got the sixty thousand, then I think it was sixty thousand this past year, so we need a hundred thousand, and so to run, and it's getting worse every year, so that's why the request for your community.
That's the concern that I have, is sixty-three fifty-five, enough.
But it has, that's our share.
I understand that, but should we not be stepping up to the plate a little more? Being our population, or?
That's their request.
Yeah.
That's what they're requesting broken down over.
Mr. Mayor, I understand that, but I'm wondering in these harder times, is that a viable number, or are we shortchanging F C S S and our community?
Well, this is the food bank portion, not F C S S.
Well, okay. Thank you for the correction, yeah.
But they would have already crunched their numbers and figured out what they were correct, and that's where this is coming from.
It's what we asked last year, and so that's what we're asking for this year.
Do you foresee the budget getting shrunk even more, from a hundred to sixty, sixty to forty, like, is that the trajectory of where we see kind of other supports coming from, and then we have to carry, you know, then the twenty-five becomes fifty, and that's probably what it looks like.
See, Food Bank is run solely on donations. And community service groups that give us money, so there is no budget per se, and then the R D M program gets money from the government, which is run through the food bank, so it's a guessing game every year.
Yeah.
Because we don't have a budget.
Right.
Per se.
Go ahead.
And for this, this is one, just one component, one program within F C S S, so they brought that proposal forward at the twenty-five thousand based on the board reviewing it, and that's what they were gonna reach out to the communities for.
And that's our bylaws too, isn't it?
Well, it's part of the funding.
The funding, okay, that's what it is.
Yeah, I just will question the next, the inflation rate that's going on right now, without any increase, is that really telling the true story?
Again, that's what they requested, so that's what the board does, is review programs.
All right, no, that's cool, okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, we'll call the questions, those in favor. Opposed, seeing none, it's carried out. Okay, moving on to the F C S S recurring grant funding request.
So this one is for the Transportation Society, and as you saw in the letter, they're asking for twenty-five thousand dollars to support the transportation network, which is brand new. They took over, obviously, in June of two thousand twenty-five. Program is funded through the Healthy Aging Grant, but they're asking for the additional funding so that they can open it up to all age groups, because of course with the Healthy Aging, it's limited to fifty-five. One of the things of note with this is this is a straight out ask for twenty-five thousand, sorry, fifteen thousand, ongoing. And in this, it doesn't mention, but they are only asking this for, from the town and county, which, as I pointed out in my report, goes again, isn't in alignment with the regional F C S S agreements, which state that should we share costs for programs outside government grant-funded, that they should be equally shared as per funding agreement, and right now, the letter doesn't state what they asked for from the county, I do know the number, but that's not our, to deal with right now, but they are asking for fifteen thousand from us, and that would be ongoing, so it would have to be added to your recurring grants portion of the budget, and again, you could also ask how this is, as I've already reached out to Judy as the chair of F C S S, and I wasn't able to get in contact with Dawn, but everybody is aware, every community signed this agreement, has that clause in there, so I did talk to the county administrator, they did look at this in closed session at their last meeting, and no resolution being overt, so I suspect that they're looking for more information, so I'll let the chair of F C S S comment on possibly how you'd like to proceed with this.
So it was not broke down, that was the board decision, the group that was there, and we've got new council members coming in, so I have no problem with this going back to board and re-bringing that up board, and that will be on this Thursday, next Thursday.
Richard?
I would agree with Judy on this, the only thing with the way the agreement's written, I would suggest that they should be approaching all the municipalities involved in this agreement, and, because that's the way it's written, so everybody should have their fair share of this too. That's my thought on it.
Yeah, like, for me, I think, you know, I support a principle, but like, it's contingent on all of regional partners are taking in proportionally, and, you know, it's a sustainability thing, and one of the critiques, you mentioned the grant funding ends when?
Twenty-twenty-eight?
Yeah, in the letter, it states that it's, they have it till March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-eight.
So you can confirm stability until then?
Yeah, but I would agree.
Judy?
Stability's good, as long as the vehicle's holding it, because we do have two older vehicles, but they are, they've been inspected, everything's, everything's good, I think it was more for in case there was issues and for the youth, but it was, what we don't like about the condition of all, because we've had one municipality that we struggle getting money from, and so if you won't give, because one village doesn't give, then it collapses. So the contingent thing can be, but again, we've got new councils, so you don't know until you ask, right?
That's true.
And then too, you know, we could table this or refer to, for more information and wait, and we do have a budget meeting coming up too, and also we can see how the numbers would fit into our budget.
We already included it, but that was just preliminary, because we're putting in numbers from everybody right now.
What is the recommendation from administration?
Well, the recommendation from administration is, I have to put a motion for, a positive motion for it, whether you accept it or defeat it, it's kind of up to council as a whole, with that, I also know that Judy's gonna be taking this back to should it be defeated as it's written, because that's written how they asked for that to come forward, if it is defeated, I'm sure that's the whole reason that it's gonna go back to their board anyways, so, Councilor Sanderson?
Yeah, I'll, you want me to make the recommendation then, that council approves Vulcan and Region Family Community Support Services Board request for the town of Vulcan to provide funding of fifteen thousand for the purposes of supporting the Rural Transportation Shuttle Service program run under the Vulcan Regional Food Bank Society, and funding for this is to be included in the recurring grants portion of two thousand twenty-six operational budget.
Okay.
And no way that this is going to get drawn in where H S is saying, well, we'll get F C S S to take a patient to an appointment?
No, we don't run under H S.
No, I understand that.
They have their own shuttle at the hospital. We haven't had that issue yet, yes, I can say that, right?
Okay, but never say never.
Never say never.
That's all I'm alluding to.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just like to have a comment, I still, I just want to make sure I'm understanding here. Are we gonna, we're gonna accept this the way it's written right now, then?
No, you can't.
No, you can vote for it, or.
Oh, I know, I know. I mean, okay, because.
If it moves forward, it'll just be put in the budget, and it'll be done, if you would like more information, you defeat it, and I believe Judy has agreed that they're gonna take it back.
But my question is, doesn't that go against her, what we have as an agreement with all the municipalities?
It does, if you approve it.
If you approve it, it does.
It does, but if you go against it, then it'll go back and the F C S S will have another kick at the cat potentially put in a vote.
Regardless of how those vote goes, I do think this funding is something that's needed, hopefully other municipalities live up to their agreement, if one doesn't.
Can you do something in terms of conditionally defer and conditionally approve? Is that essentially what?
Oh, no, Judy's made a motion, well, we can amend the motion, I guess, or.
And really, for the purposes of simplicity, if you want it documented, that you would like, because again, to answer Dwayne's question, administration's recommendation would be to vote on this, and then if the, if the motion does not move forward, then to request, make another motion to request approval from the S S Board on the cost breakdown, it'd be very good information for the town to know what's being asked of the county villages, and how this hits. So, so you can either amend this motion, this is your motion to do with what you like, Judy's already made it, so you can vote on that, and then you could do another motion requesting further.
Or you can, yeah, you can defeat it.
Just leave it, Judy's gonna take it back anyway.
Okay, any other discussion? I will ask you, any other discussion? Hearing none, I will call the question, those in favor? Those opposed? It is defeated unanimously.
Would you like to make a something retroaction?
Yes, somebody wish to make another motion? Cole?
Administration requests further information.
Yes, that'd be. How do you know enough to do that?
It's good they didn't even have remuneration in it.
Good job, Cole.
Okay, so Cole moves up. Requires more information and bring this information back to further meeting or budget meeting or whichever.
Judy, you're comfortable with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay, any discussion on Cole's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the questions in favor. Opposed, seeing none, it's carried out. Okay, moving on to the reports, Marcus Foundation. So there you have, see there's September thirtieth board meeting. Okay, any questions on that one? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the mayor's notice of October the third. Okay, any questions on this one? Okay, if not, somebody wish to file these too, Dwayne? Any discussion on Dwayne's motion to file? Hearing none, I'll call the question in favor. Opposed, seeing none, it's carried out. Moving on to verbal ones, Councilor Sanderson?
Okay, I forgot to mention last meeting that Annie from Southville called me in October to answer questions on their Economic Development Fund. I think you've been doing that for a while.
Yes.
We cover community strength, weaknesses, and challenges, did anybody else take call? Somebody, I forgot to mention that, so I guess we'll see that coming soon, or not soon.
Yeah, it'll be a work in progress, but yeah.
October twenty-eighth, due to elections and organizational meetings, we canceled our Marcus Foundation meeting at, we always have the last Tuesday of the month, and instead we hosted the self-contained housing annual meeting at two o'clock in the afternoon. This was the best turnout they said that they've had, what they do is they invite the self-contained residents into the lodge to have a meeting and have some tea, and get to visit with each other, and there was only two board members showed up, that was Kelly and myself, and you sit at different tables and you listen to if they have any concerns, and we can take it back to the board. One good thing that I thought was good is now the kitchen is allowing the residents, the self-contained residents can come into the lodge and eat, they have to pay for the mains course, but now they're gonna allow them to do takeout, so holidays or something, you want takeout, you can, or you don't feel like cooking, you can, it's just costs you a dollar for the packaging on top of this, so I thought that was good for them to have, they were excited. October thirtieth, rescue almost all of us, the town facilities tour, it was nice that we saw a couple of different things that we hadn't seen before, so I'd like to thank Kim and Stu for hosting that course. November first, the Munis Training and Letbridge, so November fourth, we had our Marcus meeting, we started with the organizational meeting, so Kelly Nelson was voted back in as chair, Lori Lippman was voted back in as vice chair, and I am remaining secretary. We also the budget was, our budget was also passed for two thousand twenty-six, and I supplied Kim with the new requisition numbers. We also, the budget was, our budget was also passed for twenty twenty-six and I supplied Kim with the new requisition numbers. We voted to update and implement rental agreements. I guess we didn't have them on self-contained units and on the lodge. It's under Peter Dawson Lodge, which is not the legal entity. So the lawyer is going to do up all the rental agreements. November sixth was the emergency management meeting. And after the meeting, there was supper in Carsland. Nutrien's putting on, so I attended that, so did Kelly Nelson. And because we were recipients of a gift for the food bank, the Vulcan Food Bank from Nutrien, so they host the supper. They used to do it all the time, but they haven't done it since COVID. And so they invite people of the community and recipients of their gifting. So it was very, very good meal. And it was a nice evening. So that was good. This morning, November tenth, at nine o'clock, we had our teams meeting, the building committee, the senior building committee that I'm on that's under Marcus. We've been meeting with Kristin from the government of Alberta about our H P P application and managed, what is it? Where is it? Is it ever written down here? What's it called again? That program we're on now, modernization programs. So it was recommended that we send in our H P P and add the eight percent on and send it in, but it's not going. Nobody else is sending those in. So it has been fast-tracked and we could see some things happening in the next couple of weeks. She said, keep your eyes on the H P P website. And we will know before the end of April at the latest. Minister Nixon will be at the R M A this year again. Why don't we get to meet with Minister? This is my question.
We can, we can. Yeah, we just need to make a request.
Okay.
And you'll have to have a pretty good.
Thing to talk about.
Fifteen minutes and you have to provide them with your topics.
Okay. Anyhow, county's meeting with him and Kelly said, well, she wouldn't bring up the modernization program. And Kristin said, well, Minister Nixon might because she does the speaking points. And so I think they, it might be brought up there. January thirty-first is the next H P P intake and it closed, where it closes. And Kristin hinted that we should apply for the self-contained units. And if we did, we'd be applying for Milo and Arrowood because we have land, because government still owns the land here in Vulcan. And if we could get something going for them, I know they'd be appreciative. But the lodge comes first. No matter what, if we get accepted for that lodge, everything else has to take a backseat. So if we're going to get something in for those, it's going to need a lot of work for us to get that put together by January thirty-first. So we'll see what happens. And yeah, November's just fifteen months, so that's.
Did you, but you, you said that you didn't have an organizational meeting yet for the, for the Peter Dawson Lodge?
Yes, we did. And that's, that's where the, oh, the organization, well, we have.
Like, did you have like, who's from Carmody and Allen?
Oh, okay, from Carmody, Doug Fraser.
Okay.
Doug, Adrian, who's from Milo.
Did you think Brad Cook?
Yeah, he's always been there. And Kevin Stevenson from Arrowood. And Champion is now, was it Dick? That wasn't.
Awesome.
I was trying to go around the table and see who's there. And we had everybody there except for Doug Fraser and he had a council meeting just. That was pretty good. We were pretty excited.
Sounds good, great. Oh, sorry.
Has saw a news brief with Triple M Homes and working with Atco Structures and modular homes that can be built in like three weeks and onsite within six, completely finished.
These will be modular. They have to go to B I T.
They, sorry?
The, the contracts have to go to B I T.
Well, that I understand. Has anybody even looked at that type of thing for this fast-tracking of?
Yes, we have. That's what we would go for. It's modular. The, what do they call that? It's not modular, it's a prefab.
Prefab. But again.
And we have a local guy interested in prefabbing those.
Which, which I understand, but is anybody from your organization looking at, at contacting and getting more information as to if they can help your situation?
Well, we have to get the ball rolling first. There's a lot involved before we get to the construction. When we did that with the lodge, Kim and Tom sat on the board of that. We have program managers. Can you?
They could, they could try to secure funding before they even put it out there.
It's got to be under the government's.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but should there not be some sort of discussion before the funding is in place? An hour meeting to see if, if at all, it's pleasurable, pleasurable?
Absolutely. Like, we've talked with the local contractor because he's contacted myself. So there's no reason why.
You couldn't contact Atco?
Yeah.
But I shouldn't go looking for.
No, no, and I'm not, I'm not asking that. I'm just saying, the organization reaching out and saying, okay, this is more information that we have in when we make our financial application to move forward. Rather than, okay, you've got the money, now you've got to go to the bid system and blah, 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 blah. You know, it just drags on. If you're a little proactive and you've got that kind of thing in the back of your briefcase, that's, that's what I'm thinking. That's all.
Yeah, we've got an architect designer and he has done plans for that type of build. So we have to get, take him to get plans from him. But how much money are we willing to put out right now if? But we, there's a process to wait and we got to.
I understand that, but the question, I guess I'm looking at, ask the question and then see where it lands. Not, not financially or anything like that. Just can it happen? Yes or no? That's all.
If they want to talk to us, we're, we're always willing to listen.
But somebody has to ask the question first. They're not going to come to you.
But if we ask them, who else do we have to ask?
Anybody you want. Like, this is only an example.
I know, but we've got to, January thirty-first, that's, we've got a lot of work to do before we can. But we can ask the questions. We put it out there.
We, we might, you might even get an opportunity to see them at the A M conference too.
Okay, no, it's only a question. I'm not, there's no criticism here. It's a question that, okay, there are alternatives out there that maybe you can bring to the table that enhances you getting your funding in place.
And, and I, I think I could probably put some clarification. The self-contained units that they're looking at, like those modulators and that, just come about when the application for the main lodge looked like it was going to be turned down. So then they started looking for, how are we going to house? So then, so this, the self-contained units is very, very preliminary. So they're kind of looking to see if they have funding that could go to that first and then put it out to get those expressions of interest from the groups. That would be, I think Judy mentioned it. The lodge is still, like the main lodge is still the number one priority.
And I understand.
Should that fall short, then absolutely, Dwayne, they'll be reaching out to anybody that will listen on what those.
Hundred percent understand. That is the first and foremost.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying there's alternative out there.
For the self-sustaining.
Where a phone call, ask the question. That's all.
Well, with, at the beginning of the year, I highlighted and showed kind of the first preliminary residential Atco structures. So when Triple M got bought by Atco, I have a few contacts there and some boots on the ground that I, I showed at the previous council for those of, of residential foot, not necessarily something of scale like that. But, you know, there are, there are solutions out there that this council has.
Yeah. The concern is, as soon as you mention Atco, it's A T C O with the orange going down the stripe and it's a flat roof and it comes in, yeah, Atco trailer, that's right. So that's, that's.
You know, it, it, I think we're starting to see the first versions of it actually looking quite nice and modern and and to something where, you know, as soon as you hear of triple M housing, that's what you think. So.
Okay, Judy?
So I haven't seen the self-contained housing H P P application yet, but I can tell you with the lodge and, and these self-contained units have to be five minutes as new government to get any funding from them. They have to be five minutes and dollars before the four minutes.
Like a five flash?
Yeah. And I'm not sure if it's the same with the lodge, but with the lodge, we have to hire a construction consultant. And they put together the pricing on whether it's modular or built. And we discussed for the lodge what it was going to be. And then it has to be verified by another construction to make sure that their costs are correct before we put it in. And then it goes to bids. Just because you're a consultant, Shandals Construction was our consultant that we hired. And that doesn't mean they're going to get the bill because it has to go up to bids after. But we have to have a construction company put the bids together and price everything out and then it's double-checked. Government's pretty stringent on, but not, but we have looked at modular. We looked at modular, how could we do it cheapest for the lodge? And we're going three-story and, you know, what's? And, but yes, modular is in our plan for the self-contained. We are not building from the ground up.
It was only, only a question.
No, I just want to explain to you what we.
No, I, I completely understand councillor Sanderson. I completely understand that, the process and everything like that. I'm just trying to plant a seed that there may be an alternative.
I wrote it down.
Okay.
Okay, any else, Judy? Okay, any other questions for Judy? If not, thank you councillor Buck.
I had the tour, of course, the town tour on the thirtieth. I thought that went very well. I thought, I really appreciate Stu's comments. He did a very good job. And again, on the bus, that was good. The munis one oh one on the, on the first of November down in Lethbridge, found that quite interesting. Actually, there were some interesting comments. Then the emergency training on the sixth here, and that was actually pretty good too. Remembered some stuff, I forgot, I guess is a good way to put it. Of course, remembered today tomorrow and then the Alberta municipalities are going to head up there tomorrow and then starts Wednesday. And so it's coming up and community as a whole on the twenty-fifth and water commission on the twenty-seventh. And I know there's something on the twenty-eighth and Danny, do I can remember?
Any questions for Richard? Hearing none. Thank you councillor Buck.
The October twenty-eighth, we, I had my first meeting with the Attra, Attraction? And retention. It was actually very informative. It was very interesting, a very small group of people, which was kind of surprising to me. But they had a few things to say. They have a webinar that is opened up for students and support systems. December ninth, they have the nurse practitioner webinar. November tenth was the grant closure international. So they provided two hundred dollars for a new nurse to come in. They provided the two hundred dollars for things like moving expenses or extras. Uh, what else? They sent out the orientation package, so I'm going to go through that probably while we're in the city. And that way I can get a better idea of what it is that they do as a whole. I found it kind of interesting with the, the doctor shortage that they currently have with some of their doctors leaving or going on part-time. And a big thing I noticed that they continuously brought up was the lack of housing. And that plays a big role in why nobody wants to come to Vulcan. That and, not that they don't want to come, but there's really not a lot of options and traveling can get expensive or it's inconvenient. So I was curious, and I don't know a lot about it, but I'm curious to know if, we talked last time about the, having that developer in town with those lots in the whispering area there. And I'm wondering if it's something that, like, we could maybe connect with getting the hospital staff or whomever is dealing with that, kind of in contacts with that developer to see if it's something that, I don't know, we can work with them on. Do you know if that's an option? But it just kind of popped into my head. They do have a new doctor that is wanting to come. I guess there was connection with Dr. Sessbert. Then when he left, it kind of dropped out. So they're back in connection again and hopefully they can convince her to come. Kids' Christmas party for them is on December sixth. I offered to contact somebody. They usually get about ten dozen donuts for, or cookies for the kids. I offered to contact Aspen Crossing to see if they'd be able to donate the cookies this year and see at the cost. Well, I offered to contact somebody and then they had suggested at Aspen Crossing. That's about it for that one. But my biggest thing, my biggest takeaway was the lack of housing for the doctors and nurses. Also, there was kind of a little bit of a discussion about what, what we need to do as a whole to kind of draw people in to make them want to come to Vulcan, live in Vulcan. What are the positives? What do we have to offer? So I'm wondering if, I'm going to kind of sit down and see if there's stuff I can put together to help with that. Also, they discussed possibly, they didn't have a lot of people show up. They had twelve members, I think it was. And I think we had six show up, something around there. So they're curious to know if maybe there's something we can change to help encourage people to come in, get some new ideas. Suggestion was brought forward to have more meetings to allow people the opportunity if they can't come one time, they're still coming every four months or so. That's about it for that one. And then we had the emergency management advisory committee meeting. I really, I forget most of what was said because that was a lot of information to take in. But I did find the E S S that Gabby came in for afterwards. That was very interesting. I didn't even know it existed. I would like to reach out to Gabby and find out a little bit more about it. She had offered to do a tour of the, the, what is it called? The thing where they keep it right in? Thank you, C P M. She had offered to do tours of that, so I'd like to go see what they have. And I'm also curious to know, with this E S S, is this something that the town contributes to financially?
Yes.
Okay, like, is, what should we, is that going to be part of the budget, I guess, individually? Like, we'll see.
Well, it's, it's under, it's part of our regional emergency management stuff, so.
Okay. And I don't know, do we currently have a town representative on that committee?
You and her.
My mom? Or is it part of that?
The E S S is just, the E S S is just a component of, of our.
But they have a whole separate one, do they not?
Right. So Gabby is part of our regional emergency management plan. And the E S S is a component of that that works with F C S S and it's the social services side of that. Gabby's got more at play in that and knows a lot more about it, which is what makes our, which makes our plan that much better because she's taken the provincial. So they send her out now to like Jasper when they have wildfire. She has enough training that she can go help other communities, which makes our program that much better.
Right, okay. I do want to reach out to her and get a little bit more information. I am curious to know how the whole thing works and how she's put it together. I think she, it sounds like she's done a really, really great job at it. And it's really benefited the community and communities around us. So I'd like to do that. Other than that, all I have.
Okay, any questions for Michelle? Hearing none. Thank you councillor Mitchell.
For me, I don't really have anything specific, no specific meetings or anything. Just, you know, summarizing just all the education that we've had in the last little bit, which has been great for, for me as a new councillor. You know, the facility tour was really great, you know, growing up in, in Vulcan and seeing something new in Vulcan is kind of interesting. So it was, it was really great to see all those pieces of infrastructure, understand what things can get. It just helps provide a framework when you're doing a budget and different things provides, provides good perspective. The munis training was really, really great too, helped, helped with providing a framework of, you know, how to, how to set yourself up for success as a councillor. The emergency management training was, was actually not what I thought it was going to be. I thought it was going to be tilted towards a few other different. I thought it was going to be tilted towards a few other different things, but, and I realize how much we don't really do a ton when the actual emergency happens, which is probably a good thing. All the pre-planning is, is kind of our part. So yeah, it was, it was, it was really great. So look forward to the three days we have at the Alberta Conference and yeah, that's, that's all I really have to say.
Thank you. Any questions for Chris? Yep, thank you very much, Counselor Hill.
I was very impressed with our tour. I've been to most of the facilities in one respect, but to visit them in a more of an operational was very enlightening, which I really appreciated. Didn't need to go into the sewage lift station over by the Wheatland Motel. We could smell it inside the, the unit. So I thank you guys very much for stopping there. But all in all, really, it was eye-opening and Public Works did a fantastic job of developing the new, or expanding the campground, did really good. The sidewalks that they have done over the past summer, again, they should be commended for. And that, that was, that was good. Kim and I had a great meal at A and W and I want to thank Mr. Paul for purchasing my lunch. That was, thank you very much. And then on October 29th, I attended the Vulcan County Health and Wellness Board Meeting. And it was, it was, it was very eye-opening for me, not knowing what the organization did. I was recognized by one of the members for my advertising on Sun Country. They talked about their standing committee, bringing on a lactation assistant to help with mennonite ladies that are having difficulty with newborns. Talked about Mental Health Coalition, which entails a number of things, as well as Mr. Hutton brought up with regards to elder abuse, sexual abuse, those types of things, which a lot of us in our community do not even fathom. But apparently it, it can and has happened. We've got an update for mental health from the U of A. And palliative care, expanding end of life. So they're working with people that are in palliative care to really delve into their end of life wishes. You know, the DNRs, those types of things, which I found very interesting and that kind of thing. One of the other things that was brought forward is the review of the mission, vision, purpose of the health and wellness and advertising to get out there to help with understanding what that foundation can and will do for the community, which was very enlightening, very enlightening. The words, the words Futureville came up. And the only time that I had ever heard of Futureville was during an MPC meeting, which was brought up by Counselor Sanderson. And I didn't realize the scope and the broadness that this is a lack of a better term organization? Individual? Help me out here, Counselor.
Kim could probably answer that better.
Development group, development group, okay, thank you. I just thought it was somebody that was trying to put basements in the ground, but it, it's definitely more than that. So I'm actually really excited to see what the next steps are as it moves forward. And again, this is driven by somebody that has some roots in the area. The other thing. They have a casino fund right, right now with about $61,000 in it. Finance, they've mentioned about $18,000. They're linking support workers with community services. They're looking to get a tech position for streamlining, streamlining their technical side of things. And they want to start live streaming on the website with moving forward and getting similar to what we do with our council meetings. Okay? And the next thing is they want to get, or it looks like me, or it looks to me that somebody has donated what is called a cuddle bed, which is moved into a room in palliative care where the spouse can spend time with the person that's in palliative care, end of life, that types of things. And like I say, it was very eye-opening for me to be involved in that. And it was good to see Mr. Mitchell back at the helm. Our next meeting is the 26th of 2027, or 2025, and I look forward to that. And yeah, other than that, we're supposed to have a meeting on Wednesday night for FCA, or friends. And I don't know what's going on there. I haven't been able to keep up with emails yet.
So we don't, not a true, we don't have a true palliative care room yet, it's just a room. Remember where, where they used to, there used to be a room where they really had a fridge and there was a lot of couches where family could go, but I think that got taken up. So they're going to build an actual palliative room?
My understanding right now, they're just going to get a bed where they can move the bed into a room for palliative care. In case, end of life, that type of thing. I may be wrong, but that's my understanding. So that it, so as, worst case scenario, the person's going downhill fast. A relative, spouse can be there 24/7. Now, will there be a room? Anything's possible with this foundation, from what I gathered in the, the brief meeting that I've had. It's a very aggressive organization. Yeah.
Any other questions, Ray Gray? Nope, thank you. Wayne, Counselor Dunham?
Meetings I've had has been more training based. It was that tour that we did, which was awesome. Went to the Munis training. I missed the emergencies meeting because I had a work conflict. Looking forward to the convention this week. I was omitted apparently from the golf course meeting. They didn't have, include me in their contacts, so I missed that. I talked to one of the members there and they, they apologized for not having me included and then kind of inquired about our involvement going forward. And I said, as of right now, I expect it to be there until the council decides it's no longer relevant or needed. His response was, he said, we like you there. If you don't want to be there as the council decides that, that's fine too. Kind of was shocked, I think. He said, it's only a $20 million asset you own, why wouldn't you want to be involved? I said, well, I, I don't know, I've never been to a meeting, so I don't. So hopefully they're going to include me to the next one, I guess, we'll wait and see. Lake Richard, I also have a Water Commission meeting coming up at the end of the month. That's it.
Okay, any questions for Cole?
Mr. Gray, may I add, I do apologize that I double booked myself for Thursday. It was an oversight on my part. I completely missed that and that, that's bad on me, so.
You, you two will have to take that.
Yeah. Can you call, call his, he's already fulfilled the legislative requirement, but Counselor Hill will.
Will you check with the CEO from the county?
Yeah, I'll get you.
When that will be forwarded to me so I can get that address.
Yeah, absolutely.
And again, I do apologize that I ended up double booking.
And you can do the course online, so.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, anything else for Cole?
It's not for Cole, but I have a quick question. Shouldn't we start reaching out to some of the other committees that we are signed up for if they have not reached out to us already? Or should we hold off?
Karen, Karen has sent all of your information out to all the groups.
Okay, so it should be.
Emails as their meetings get rolling.
Okay, and me, the SEWA, you saw that letter from them, but some of the people in the South especially have spoken to us, spoken to Ms. Kim Craig and myself about trying to get together and get this ball rolling for them in the South a little bit quicker. Southgrew did reach out that they felt that there was a grant that might be available for that Southgrew one. So we're kind of working with Peter to see if we can qualify for some funding for, for SEWA to do some. Again, we're, we're going to have to do a, a study on our waste characteristic study again and bring it up to speed and so. And then also the other one is, is governance model two, is it? SEWA does have a, a corporation, but it's just sitting on a shelf in the lawyer's office. And so we might be able to use that for the group in the South if that needs to be. So there could be some funding in that. Kim and I attended a, a meeting with Donna Anderson, Gabrielle Kurt, Gail Wark. There was.
The Health and Wellness Group was there.
Yeah. One of our previous docs were there. There was.
It was concerning community members.
Yes, there was quite a, quite a few that were there. Anyway, the, the long and short of it was is that there's major concerns about our facility that's in our community that does long-term care. And so they had this, this discussion and this, I think it was Gabby that, or this Gabrielle Kurt that did the presentation. Anyway, there was a discussion about, and I brought it up, there was a gentleman, the mayor from Clarles Home was online. And so I brought it up at Mayor's Reeves and they're definitely interested in having a presentation. So I'll reach out to Donna, give her the information for that. And yeah, it was well attended. Shocking on one behalf, but yet, you know, being that it's a private enterprise that deals with some of the issues that Kim and I and Nelson and Kim had a bit of a discussion on what we could do as municipalities to, because again, there's all these different groups and you know, who does what and who doesn't do which and.
It was led by senior protect.
Yes, senior protect, thank you. And so anyway, Kelly was there too, Nelson, and it was well attended. And so hopefully we're going to do some information on that. So we'll probably talk about it a little bit at the, as we, as we go through on, on how to move forward with some of these other groups too. I also did attend the Retention and Attraction Committee as a lay member. But there is some information that I'll share with Chantel on, on what we have done in the past and where we've run into some roadblocks, because some of your thoughts are no different than what we've been trying to do for, for years. The town tour again was great, appreciated. Every time I go, I, I learn something a little bit and hopefully, you know, you know, we're something that we can share with each and every one of you folks. And as, as we move forward. The training in Lethbridge, again, like I said to Judy, or I pulled out my last year's, or last time book and it was about half the amount of papers, pages in it. So they increased the amount of pages, but they shortened the course because last year it was a two-day course and they went down to a one-day course and they tried to have it all in. But, but again, it's information like they, they had said in that course that you know, you can pull that off the shelf and look at it. There was some things that we were, are concerning or questioned. Again, they, they talked about the, the way we do our motions. And our motions are totally different than what they recommended. But again, I hope I explained why we chose to go the way we do. That doesn't mean that you can't take the motion that Kim has and put it on first instead of having the discussion and then the motion. It's up to you folks. This is your, your, your meeting, your, your, go ahead.
So with the recommendation that has been put forward by administration, it gives us a basis to look at and/or amend or defeat, I guess, is what it comes down to, correct?
You mentioned, yeah.
So why are you saying that it has to be?
Well, if you, if you follow proper Roberts Rules of Order, you have to have a motion to open it on the floor. So we could take that motion, move it to the top, have it set so that it gets on the floor, then you can discuss it. And there, once you go to, to the AM conference, you'll see it, it goes back and forth, the pro and the con.
So who's going to get whacked if we do it the way we're doing it?
No, nobody, hopefully, I mean.
That's all, that, yeah, that's my question.
I, I did get whacked when we did the, not this last go around, but the time before when we did the municipal accountability. Accountability once, and that's why you have to ask the question for or against.
Yes.
Even though you see everybody might be for or everybody might be against, you still have to ask both questions. And then you have to publicly say.
Declare the.
Declare.
But you affirmed that at our first meeting.
Correct.
Okay? So you, we know as members of this council what the protocol is.
Right. But again, I'm just saying that you guys saw in there and, and there will be a conference, there'll be something at the conference, I'm sure, talking about governance. And governance is not the way that we normally do our governance. And so I'm just saying, if you folks wish it to be changed, while I'm mayor, I have no problems looking at a different method. I'm just explaining how we have done it and how it's been relatively successful. But anyway, Cole.
I like the way we've done it. I think tonight was a good example where a motion was, was defeated and then anyone was tabled. I, I see no issue with the way it is.
I, I just wanted to make sure because again, when we went to the course, they, they do things or recommended things different than what I'm doing. So I just wanted to make sure that you guys know that.
That was of course taught by a lawyer as well.
I know, I know, I appreciate it. And then again, if you, at the AM conference, I'm sure, I'm not 100% positive, but there usually is in the next couple of years, one on governance. And they usually go through Roberts Rules of Order and parliamentary procedure. And so you can see the difference between the two and the pros and the cons to how to do it. And, and again, if there's a major debate, then you know, have no problems reverting back to, to.
You're just a rebel, Tom. You're just a rebel.
Yeah, no, I know, but anyway, just, just so that you guys. I, I also attended the Emergency Management Course. It's been quite a few times that I've seen it and it has morphed and changed a bit. And I, I thought they might go into more detail and about the, you know, suggesting that everybody at least take the, the ICS 100. It can be done on, online. I, I'm not sure, sometimes when you go, like I've got my 400, but when you take a look and see what I've got and what I've done with my 400 and all the, you know, the methods of getting it, you know, being a counselor, you don't need it at all, you don't even need your 100 in true honesty. But the only difference is, is that it gives you kind of a background of what they're doing out there representing you and why they do it in which way.
One of the suggestions that they've come with now that you can do is you, you can't go straight into 100. Now you have to take the basic emergency management, which reviews what we reviewed. And then you can do, and they, they are suggesting the council should take it to the 100 level. So we'll try to line that up, it'll be online.
The advantage of doing it as a group, it's the same thing as this emergency management too. The advantage of that is you, you can kind of sit around and talk about some stuff that you have done or haven't done or could do or couldn't do or, or whichever. And, and we never really had time to do any of that. You know, there was that one lady from Carmigay that's got a lot of experience on the, on the.
She's the chair of the. She's the chair of the committee now.
Oh, is she? Oh, but anyway, you know, so you kind of sit back and say, you know, it would have been better, kind of need to have heard a little bit of some of her experiences and that. And again, I thought maybe Doug would have been there, but he wasn't there, so did he show up from the ladder?
No, he wasn't tabled, they had some other staff members. Then Gabrielle came to the committee meeting and presented about the E C.
Okay, sounds good. Then I attended the Mayor's Reeves. It was down in Lutbridge. It's at the Shunuck Regional Library Systems Facility. There was sixteen of us in person and fourteen online. The major, they had the appointment of the chair and the vice chair, which is the previous chair and the previous vice chair. The M P's, we didn't have any M P's at this meeting at all, which is kind of strange, but yet we're hoping that in the new year that we'll see more M P's showing. M L A's, we only had one, and it was Grant Hunter. He was late, but he said that he can't travel anymore at night. He did get into some of his personal life a little bit of him, of what, you know, he's dyslexic. And so it affects his ability to drive at night, and I didn't realize that it did, but he does. And but a very well-spoken man and he's quite highly educated. And you consider that he's, you know, he's got this disability which he brought out, but I'm not sure, but, you know, he's the one that generates the thirty-three page, or him and his staff, thirty-three pages. And it happens pretty well every month, he doesn't.
Did you say he's dyslexic?
Dyslexic.
Okay.
And so, but anyway, he spoke about the four bills that were there. He left bill two, which was the teacher one, to last, and which is probably good in a way, but bad on the other hand. But there was quite a discussion on that one there. And then Jason Schneider did his for R M A. He is not going to be the new rep for the South again. He's gone in for vice chair, I guess it is, of R M A. And they have a small group, they only have seven or eight on their group, so it's not a very big group. And so, but Jason always does a great job too. He, I wish that he had put it in print, same as Grant does, because there's a lot of information that he brings forward that R M A is working on on behalf of their members, which does affect us. We did have Mayor Deborah Reed Michter. You guys will get to meet her up in Calgary. And she is the alternate for this, the one that was the Scott Ackerman's, but he didn't, he wasn't successful in, so that's why there's a by-election for the, for the South. And there's about five or six, and I'm sure you guys have got all the emails of everybody saying that vote for me, vote for me. And you can, they'll come around to our table and visit with them. I'm sure of why they should get the position. But anyway, it was, it was, it was a good meeting. It wasn't, there wasn't as many mayors that I had thought there'd be, or Reeves, being especially after the election. But again, most of them are trying to do the same thing as we are, trying to jam all these meetings that you have to get in. They use an expression that we're all drinking from a fire hose. And so anybody that's been involved in the fire department would understand that the fire hose is not a nice item to drink from because it's, you get more wet than you do water in your body. So that's what they're kind of saying is why there's not so many people coming to some of these meetings. And again, you know, everybody's trying to get out there and get their feet wet and go from there. I too will be at the Remember Today Tomorrow service. I, the mayor's always been invited. I don't know, they never used to invite the Veeve. I'm hoping that they have changed that process, but invite the Veeve to say a few words. And so you usually bring greetings from the town and always asked to say a few things, so. And then again, I will be at the A M conference, hopefully see everybody up there. And like Richard said earlier, that they have opened it up to, you can get in early, three o'clock, I think, three.
Three, eight, yeah.
You can get your. Credentials and stuff and get into the hotel at four, I think it is. So I think it's four is the time of the hotel.
Are we going tomorrow or?
Some people, mostly people will go up tomorrow.
What is this organization doing?
Well, yeah, tomorrow night.
Everybody, you're booked for tomorrow.
Yeah, you're booked for tomorrow night.
Conference starts at seven thirty in the morning, is why we do it.
What?
Yeah, so you have to get out before the crack of noon, everybody.
Wednesday at seven thirty at the Tellus Convention Center for breakfast.
Has anybody signed up on the A M yet?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I was looking for everybody's names on there and I couldn't find anyone.
Yeah, no.
You can stay anonymous on there. That's a jog first name.
Okay, and that's pretty well it for me unless somebody has questions or. Hearing the questions, I would entertain a motion from the verbal reports. Okay, Judy? Any discussion of Judy's motion? Hearing them, call the questions, those are big. Posed, assuming that's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the activity list.
I would like to proudly announce that the item, first item on the list from nineteen, there, from two thousand nineteen has been taken off. You can see everything from the last committee meeting, the last meeting, sorry. The only thing outstanding is we're still doing preparations for the committee of the whole meeting on the twenty-fifth. Here, I can lead into my C A O report. You've all had a chance to read it, so just hit the high-level stuff. I finished the documents with North and Company for the sale of those three lots in the industrial subdivision. So they will be bringing development agreement right away for council approval. Hopefully be able to get started in the spring. So that's quite good news. We arranged with Legion for the first poppy presentation here in the town office. And so that was, that was good, tall met up at the Legion and then back here, so.
Yeah, I didn't mean all my invite. I just saw the invite part, last year I was at the Legion, so I was sitting down there waiting and nobody was showing up, so.
They came here.
Both parents, the parents know it's here. And Kim says, have you looked at the rest of your invite? Give it a sit, we have the town office.
Sometimes the first line is the most important.
I was still early.
Were you there, you were early.
I was still early.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to point that out. We've been working quite a bit with the F C S S and Food Bank with some of the funding requests that are coming through. And we're working to try and get some consistency with that to help those through a little bit easier. I do want to apologize for council C, C P K C didn't give us anything, any notice. They found right before the end of the day, the day before that road quarter. And I did mention that they should provide us with some kind of notice so that we can let the public know. But again, with the proximity of that, it had a fairly low impact on our regular traffic in town. So, and they did extend it, as you saw from the emails. So when things like that come up, if we can't bring it up at a council meeting, I'll make sure that you guys have an email. So if you do have any questions for that, just let me know. We had our auditors in for two days on site and everything went really well with that. So they're working to wait to get that. So they, whenever your end comes, they'll be ahead of the game. Had some community member inquiries, mostly on the development side. We do have a tax sale for the seventeenth. There's been some inquiries about the building, but I don't think with the nature of the building that I, I'm not anticipating anybody coming in for the live auction for that. So we'll bring that to council once that happens. And then some information on the water block and some of the lines for the balcony east. And that's pretty much it, my meetings of note were the Senior Protect meeting that Tom had indicated. Without going too far into it, really what they're doing is that Senior Protect headed up the meeting, got several little community groups involved in it, health, wellness and that. And really what they're looking for is trying to unify further some advocacy on behalf of the Senior Protect. So there will, there will be information that has come to council in the past and I'm sure that they're gonna ask us for active participation in advocacy in the future. And we'll be able to do that through, through motions of council. The council facility tour, I'm glad for those who could attend, but it did have benefit to you because that's a, that's a long day of trying to cram in everything that we do out in the outside world. You need one-on-one training, I've done that one four times. And as Tom said, it does get shorter and shorter. And I really hope that you guys now appreciate what went from two days down to one day that I tried to do in an hour before you guys did your own sub offices. How hard that was to try to compress that much information, but I'm glad we were able to do those. I was really glad that you were able to attend, there's a lot of information in that course. Skates and partners, obviously for our follow-up, there was lots of questions for that. We've gotten all the information that they need. And the emergency management training, again, that's condensed down quite a bit from what it used to be. And I know that as we move forward, everybody gets involved a little bit more, perhaps we'll look at trying to do the I C S one hundred basic emergency management training for you if you're interested in. If not at all. And that's my report, unless there's any questions.
Okay.
With the short notice from C P K C, I see that there was a payment made for eleven hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty cents. Maybe they, maybe we make that because of the short notice.
He's a little tiny.
When we are.
Funny they were not interested on it.
When we're off camera, I hear.
No, it's just, it's tongue-in-cheek.
Yes, I, I will tell you an anecdotal story of working with C P on our.
Thank you.
On our crossings.
Yes.
But it was nice to hear at the emergency management course that they've got a new people involved from their organization that has more of a.
Public relations side.
Better, better attitude towards emergencies and events. So it's, hopefully it'll be very positive because when, forty years I was involved, it wasn't positive at all, so.
I'm just looking to save some money, that's all I mean. The short notice thing and the money and.
Remind me to tell you the story.
No, I, I think I kind of know what.
Okay, any other questions for Kim? I have one, there's an approach that's off of one of our roads.
Oh, jeez.
Piece of property.
Yeah, they're working with the owner to get the approval process for that.
I was curious if they just did it on their own.
They started the process because they caught grief about driving down the ditch. But they just for access to that property, which they're working with Rita to get the proper information.
Appreciate that.
Were you contacted by a taxpayer?
No, I was just driving.
By and saw. Yeah, just you see the pack.
I actually saw the road and then you see the, they did the gas line survey.
Yeah, the guy's starting to want to do, start on the development side, so he's been working with Rita and of course.
It's just a single dwelling?
Caught, no, no.
What is it? Well, there's gonna be a lot.
There, nothing's, no formal plans.
Just somewhere.
Yeah.
A bunch of napkins and.
He's bought the property, he's coming up with a plan. So, and again, caught grief for driving down the ditch, so thought the approach would be a good effect, but still needs to be purpose properly for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, anything else for Kim on that?
That should have been an development officer question.
Well, you can.
That's the next report.
We'll do it to the next report, then maybe.
No, everybody's had a chance to read it, I don't know if there's any questions since I read his reports. Approaches going through the process.
Okay, okay, no questions on Rita's, we'll move on to public works. And once we go through the budgets and, and some of the stuff that Kim or Stu brings up and Rita brings up and Chris brings up, it, some of that stuff will get flushed out a little bit more for you guys and as time goes on, you'll kind of understand what, what they're saying. Some of the stuff every month will look the same, but yet there is tons of work that's going in behind the scenes on a lot of the stuff.
Did we get a new single axle dump truck?
Not for years.
Four, five years ago.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a little Kenworth. That little Kenworth.
No, no, this was even smaller.
Oh, the one ton?
Yeah.
That was during Howard's time.
It's.
Who's?
The one, the one ton?
Yeah.
Yeah, but the one ton, no, that was done while I was in here.
It's not, no, not.
It was done before me.
Yeah, no, I was still a former.
So there's been no new vehicles this year?
No.
According to budget.
Okay.
No, all we really got was the greater, the sheer and a lower.
And new pickup is on for twenty twenty-six.
So you'll, you'll get to see that, you'll get to see the twenty-five-year amortization of all the equipment?
I just saw a white truck with a dump box on it driving around town.
Yeah, that, that's our one ton and that was purchased when I was the former.
No, no, this was like brand new. So it must be somebody else.
Okay.
No, and it's just a question because it did not have any debt lien.
No, okay.
Okay?
Not ours.
Okay, anything else on, on Stu's? If not, we'll move on to Chris's community services.
Chris asked me to bring up the camps that were put on through the strike. Were, worked out very, very well for, you can see the participation, fifty-six, forty-eight, and a hundred and nineteen kids through, through the three weeks. We also generated revenue of almost seven thousand dollars for, for that as well, for, for those programs. And then on the other side, he also has most of the numbers done. Now tourist centers closed, thirteen thousand people to go through there, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars in merchandise with a fifty percent, eight percent margin on the majority of it and nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-five, so really close to that ten thousand, who's hoping for, for the tip-top pay. Very successful year dollar.
Yeah, it was quite amazing, just even in September, the number of people went through and how much money was spent there compared to past years, it was like.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Good job, that's for sure.
And again, we, you might not see these numbers every, every month, but we do try to give the comparison between when they put programs on, where they're from. So there might even be another category of other, and so, you know, it might be the town, county and other. And it's just, just so that we kind of track those numbers. And so it depends on how the, they do the, not the program, but the, when you register, they, they use a.
Oh, the booking program.
The booking program, that, that's the way they break them up, so.
One of the other things to note that is not an ordinary part of recreation's mandate, but on October thirty-first and November first, that's normally the Monster Smash tournament that is held in school because of the strike. They weren't able to do that, they were gonna cancel the tournament. So our recreation department took that over and put that on. And we actually ended up turning a revenue of six thousand bucks out of that.
Yeah, it's funny, I, I knew the one was canceled and I enjoyed this sheep. She was traveling on the road turn, she says, what's going on this year? I said, I don't have a clue.
It's the normal tournament that the school put on and because they were gonna cancel it and again, they didn't want all, they had all the teams booked and teams were quite upset that they couldn't come. So we just turned her on with our joint use, rented the facility and put it on and it was very successful.
And that's just the high school volleyball, right? Not the junior high dress high school?
Yeah, I believe Monster Smash is just the. So they ended up, yeah, fifteen, so there were sixteen teams originally booked, all but one came, so. So they did really well. Outside of the normal stuff in there, that's something that I commended them on being able to pull off on short notice.
And also that you'll notice in, in his comments too, is that he was able to meet with the county's recreation department, which they have.
Secure all the funding for this year.
Secure some funding, so in previous years, there was, they've been working on this process of how, how they can meet with them and show them the program and that they're interested in doing it, so he does it quarterly.
Yeah, so what we do is we go in quarterly for the new councillors. We used to just ask for an annual amount and then we would do the programming on that. The county wanted more involvement, kind of some numbers, how many county kids. So which is why we break out some of those, that information, how many out of town, how many in town. And so that they know what percentage that they're funding in some of these programs. And so that they know what percentage that they're funding in some of these programs. And to see if a program is sustainable, you know, if the county's not gonna support it and it's ninety percent county kids that are taking it, then we will cut that program if it's not being funded. So that process started where, uh, Chris was going in quarterly, telling the programs that he was hoping to run. They would tell the funding that they would provide and then we would come back and be able to run the program. And this last meeting that he had, he presented all of the stuff and they supported it a hundred percent. So we were able, he was able to secure all the funding he was looking for, uh, for a record program. That was very successful.
Chris is a big asset, hey, he's been really great in there.
He is.
Okay, any other questions on Chris's?
So that, I just wanna understand, like, the economic budget that you guys had put in, in that hundred thousand? Is that, do you see that going up or do you see that, you know, it's, is he not really hitting that ceiling on that spend? And so he's really working within that means, like, you know, does he need more rope?
Yeah, and that, that'll all come through the planning. And what, what, how you guys wanna, uh, move that, you'll see where he's at. He's putting in what he's trying to hit. And right now, uh, for what he's trying to do, it looks good, but, uh, again.
Like, does he need a, you know, like another person or something?
Yeah, he'll, he'll, that, that's what that planning, but.
Yeah, and same thing with that economic development, that plan for twenty twenty-six is underway, you know, um, he's already booked and that's the part, part of the problem, he's, has to book like the home garden show. Some of, in, in the past, um, we've changed the process. In, in the past, it was all council driven and, um, and since then, you know, it's changed. And so, I mean, counselors are, you know, um.
Can participate if they'd like, but.
Yeah, yeah, but it's not a, a must. And at one time, we had different methods of how we were, you know, manning the booth. And so that has suddenly changed. And so Chris will get an opportunity to, uh, explain how the process works when it comes up in, uh, budgeting and also in, uh, planning and see if you wish to change the direction or.
Maybe we should set up the booth in here for the planning meeting.
Yeah.
Cause it takes up the whole council chambers.
But anyway, um, so some of us have had the opportunity and, and, you know, the pros and cons. And so you'll hear some anecdotal information of, of how people have shown up in our community because of the things that we've done and how some people think that we should just stay home and.
Keep running.
And, you know, keep the money in the bank account. So, um, there'll be always those ones that'll come, that information will come out, so.
Does Chris present what he shows at, like, the, this home and garden thing on February? Will we, we can, will we see a showcase of what it could be or does he, how does he, how does that work?
Yeah, well, uh, specifically for the home and garden show, you just asked, we've got, we've got a little setup and those sort of things. He's gonna more want feedback from you on participation, should we continue, all of those things. Cause home and garden show is a perfect example. They want us to book the minute we walk out the door from the year before, so. To, and so, you know, that's a, that's a fairly healthy investment at seven thousand bucks to be there for just the booth. And then you put in all the time of all, um, the staff and, uh, and the counselors that attend.
So does, uh, so are we looking at potentially having material highlighting the, uh, industrial subdivision?
We do.
It's got it right, right there, that's what he's working on. Yeah, so I guess, I guess, he's working on it, we'll see it.
Yeah, and, and unfortunately, ev- every, every year that we've been there, some of the stuff is morphed and changed. Um, and, uh, and, uh, like I said, it, it originally, the first home and garden show that, uh, was ever there, we had our developers there, they were the ones that, um. And, and our Realtors. And since then, our developers and Realtors, you know.
Yeah, I guess what I'm just trying to think is, there's a lot of, there's a lot of activity happening in the subdivision right now. You have these four flexes coming up. You have a phase in on this project that's getting ready to get put out, you know. It, it sounds to me like there's an opportunity to highlight the things that are happening in that subdivision, the activity that it spurred in the last nine, nine, twelve months. And, you know, segue it into the industrial section, you have a couple of new tenants coming in there, you know. What's a drone flyby, those two pieces of property that were done?
And that's what Chris puts together, he's got, he's got TVs going with the most up-to-date information. And as Tom said, it morphs every year. So we're, uh, our previous side on that, when we were putting it together, we kind of went the same message every year. Chris changes the message every year to try to change things up.
I think it just gets people kind of excited when they see the activity in, in, in the residential and the industrial. And then you can highlight all the amenities and everything and you can wrap it up in a nice package, I think.
I can tell you from sitting at the booth, I've been there one year where the only thing we got was condolences because Dr. Spock passed the hand.
Yeah.
You know, I, they're dressed in uniform, shaking hands and all we got was condolences.
Yeah, and I was standing right beside my, my statue and, and.
They thought it was a, a spot on.
They were crying at his feet.
We, we've seen all kinds of developments at that. And really, Chris has, uh, really taken, uh, the change in, uh, council's philosophy on economic development over the last couple of years and really used that to showcase the community. Uh, our booth was updated last year and again, it's, it's impressive when you see it. And I was joking, but if you wanna see it set up in this council chambers, I can either show you pictures or we can do it again.
No, no, nothing like that, it's just.
But it's, it, it's something, it's something that you have to experience too. And one of the reasons why, um, there was a shift away from council participation as much is it was kind of unfair to also take counselors or put them in, in that atmosphere. Getting asked questions about when Spock days and all those things. And if you don't have a list in front of you, then you look kind of foolish down in there as well.
Right.
So that's, that's why making sure everybody had, that works at the booth has all of the information that they can ask those questions, answer those questions. And again, in one conversation, you could be talking to a, uh, potential developer, the next person you talk to could be, uh, huge, huge Star Trek fan. So to complete the different conversations, yeah.
Yeah.
And it makes, it makes it hard for some of the folks that work there as well. Anyway, that's off of Chris's report, we'll hold up.
Oh, yeah. I like tangents.
Yeah, w- once we get into the, uh, planning and, and again, you know, you guys are, you know, want some of this information upfront and some of it's is gonna be given to you and some of it's been given to some of us for, for years.
Over and over.
So, but anyway, anything else, any other questions on Chris's? If not, unfortunately, we were missing two.
Yes, the bylaw, and that was because Chaney, uh, away and, uh, we didn't get fire.
Yeah, so those are the other two that we normally get every. Once a month. Okay, any, go ahead.
I would like to move the administrative reports.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on Cole's motion? Hearing that, I'll call the person later. Posed, seeing none, it's clear unanimously. Okay, moving on to there's no closed meeting, German, Dwayne. Any discussion on Dwayne's motion? And none, call question? Or the, the chairman?